Good evening. I call the meeting to order. It's about two minutes past seven. If anyone's recording, then they could know. Sounds like we have an echo, Bob. Is that accurate? Yeah. First order of business is approval of the minutes for September fourteenth. The saving paper. Everybody good with the minutes of September fourteenth?
Everybody's prepared, Mr. Chairman. Would someone just listen to the tape and...
I would assume they watched or listened to the...
They wa- they watched the DVD.
Okay.
And take the minutes.
Okay.
Then they're corrected by someone else as well.
Okay.
So two pairs of eyes.
Would someone care to make a motion?
We adopt the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Let's see.
Opposed.
Okay.
Just to let you know, we'll be catching up on minutes in the near future.
That's good. Thank you.
Next, we have an A and R for Stella Silvesta, 153 Sandwich Road. I believe you guys looked this up, and there was some articles missing from the plan.
Mr. Chairman, it was the notes on the plan identified weren't on there in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations. They amended them and included all the notes.
This is... Is this two structures on the same lot, or are they just moving a lot line?
Moving the lot line.
Where was it before?
It was all one lot. They created splitting that piece off. Slot line was put into place. This was all one... All in the same ownership.
So it is two structures on...
Yeah.
One lot prior to zone?
Yeah.
Half of Lot 134 and half of Lot 126 to Lot 127. Questions? Motion?
Well, I believe, Mr. Chairman, when we looked at it when they came in that night, they were just missing the information on the plan from the rules. Ken, they took care of that, so I wouldn't make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? You're in on all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess to endorse. Oh, I'm sorry.
Correct that motion to endorse.
Get your Sharpie on you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
I keep getting misappropriated, don't know why.
I need one signature, I judge.
Uh, yeah.
Those copies?
Yeah, I signed two copies.
These are for the record, what do you want?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the discussion today. Please. Thank you.
They can sign if they want. We just need the... The next item is a discussion about street acceptance at the Woods at Great Neck. I don't know. Charlie, there was some notations missing from the plan, the street acceptance plan for the Woods at Great Neck. Do you know if they've been corrected?
I haven't seen a plan that shows the information I requested. I'm not sure that it's been released from GAF yet.
So that's all we're waiting for there.
Clarification on that. Let Lee Castaneda know the issue, which was the conformance with the state law that Charlie had identified, Chapter 138, Section 58.
183.
183, Section 58. And they're having their title insurance company review that information now.
Okay.
And we'll respond.
Okay. Next item with the invoices for Mark Bobrovsky and Hunter's Associates. I took care of those. We have a continued public hearing for Canning Realty. You say they're expect- they're asking for a extension of time for how long?
They asked for an extension, a six-month extension on the time for review.
Do we have the plan?
Yeah, we opened the public hearing for the...
They haven't taken it back.
Progressive growers.
Right. I know, I recall it, but did they not say they were going to amend their plan or something like that? Missed that, I guess. Were they were going to withdraw, or was that hearsay?
They weren't going to withdraw, no.
So it was hearsay?
I talked to them today, and they said they weren't. They did not want to withdraw if they didn't have to.
Okay.
They wanted an extension of time so they could consider their options.
No options on more land? Is that what you mentioned earlier?
The other land.
Other land.
Other locations. In other towns.
We have any jeopardy by continuing the public hearing by six months?
I was gonna say, shouldn't we just...
Ask them to withdraw and resubmit when they're ready? There's a cost associated with that to them, but... The cost of the application.
What's the cost?
The notices to the public, to the abudders.
Mm-hmm. They didn't have any.
They must have some abudders.
Two. Makepeace. And they were on the cover line, so they didn't have...
So that's all of $20 worth of notices?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if they withdraw it, then they... And reapply, do they pay another site plan fee?
They should.
What's the fee? Three, four, five hundred, whatever?
Something like that, plus the appetite.
What he was gonna put up there?
I think I'd be in favor of asking them to withdraw and resubmit. It doesn't make sense to keep it going for six months to me. I don't get that. I don't understand that.
What's the harm to us just to extend it?
There isn't, but I don't... I don't see the need to extend if they're unsure of what they're really gonna do in the future.
Well, there wasn't... There wasn't any public input on that particular night. So we'd say there is... The only harm would be that it would fall off the radar of the abudders, but...
Right.
Well, they'd get a notice again.
Right.
When your abudders is makepeace, basically.
Is that it? Just makepeace, is there?
Right.
And the town of Wareham, and now probably the millwork company might be...
No, because...
Too far.
All the space between them and the millworks.
Yeah, too far.
All makepeace lots.
Yeah.
Extend it for six months.
Yeah.
What does that do precedent-wise, though? People come in, and then they hear maybe a couple of members that aren't overly in favor, and they say, "Well, you know what? We're just gonna extend it for six months and give it some time. We'll look around. We'll explore other avenues." In the meantime, the plan's sitting there.
Well, if they're looking to acquire additional property to...
We don't know. I mean, we don't have anything in writing from them to that effect, so... I mean, that's could just be hearsay, so I just don't see the benefit to the town to leave it open.
Am I the only member that heard that they were going to withdraw this?
I never heard that.
Never heard that, okay. Maybe it's just me.
Mr. Chairman, has this been done in the past where applicants have extended for such a length of time?
We've had applicants do it without asking, you know, just continually...
Right, ask for a...
Bump it, so I mean, it's a little more... Well, great that they've told us that they want some more time.
Did we receive a letter in writing for a six-month extension?
No, we did not.
Well, you want to continue it to the next meeting and tell them to submit something in writing, requesting a specific date or something along those lines?
Where do we stand with the timeframe now? I mean, I forget when the first hearing was, but...
Yeah, I think they should accompany it with an extension, written extension.
It's been near three months now, right?
What's that time period? Does it just run from the on-site plan?
From the hearing or usually?
From the close of the hearing, and there's no...
So long as the hearing is continued to a date certain, the hearing is still open.
Right.
Which, so that was where I was heading, Charlie, thank you, is I thought we extended it to a night, and then they didn't show up or whatever.
Right.
And we said, "We'll extend it to another night on your calendar, Mr. Chairman," and is this the night?
This is the night.
Yeah, and they're not sitting here, so... Not a lot of interest to get the project done, in my opinion.
The hearing was held on February 22nd. It was open.
Yes, and it was continued.
Been two and a half months.
And they didn't show up, so we continued it for them.
Right.
To a particular night, which I guess is tonight, and they're not here again. And you spoke to them?
Right.
Well, I just spoke to them today, so... Wouldn't, unless they write it down and hand it as a paper, we wouldn't have time to get it in writing.
They're not here. I... Nothing in writing. I guess I agree with Michael. I wouldn't extend it. I'd say no.
We could give them till our next meeting to present something, but I'm still not in favor of leaving a public hearing open for six months, to be honest with you. They needed a month or two to get ready, but it sounds to me like they really don't have a plan right now, and they may not have a plan for a while, so in six months, it still might be open. I would ask, I think it's just right to withdraw and resubmit. But we could give them till next meeting just to see if they wish to do something.
We gave them till the next meeting, and they talked to Ken the day of the meeting, so I would agree with you, Mike. I think they should just withdraw it, Mr. Chairman, and when they're ready, come on back.
All right, we'll make that recommendation, and we'll take action next meeting.
So you'll continue the hearing until the 23rd?
Motion to continue?
Yeah.
Did you make that motion?
I'd make a motion to continue...
Oh, no.
To the next meeting.
Sorry?
No, I was talking to George.
Oh.
Because I shook my head.
And with a request that they submit something in writing or withdraw. And I would like to make a note that I'm not in favor of the six-month extension, so I would think it should be something reasonable.
Share a second.
There's a second with seconding and comments that six months is out.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion.
Yes.
That when, if you write the letter to them suggesting that they need to submit something for whatever extension you want, or if you're not going to authorize a suggestion, you need to take a vote as to whether or not you want to accept the plan or not.
Mm-hmm.
And then give the reasons why.
Okay.
You don't want to leave it just wide open without a positive decision of... Positive or a decision to turn it down on the basis of the lack of information.
Yeah, we'd have to close the public hearing and vote on the plan.
Yeah.
Unless they withdraw it. Very good.
We have Mr. Rowley's notes in the file from his recommendations.
Next on the agenda, we have a plan for the Wareham Marketplace, which will be going in front of ZBA for site plan review. Yeah, this is on the corner of Toby Road and Cranberry Highway. And it's... The plan submitted requires a variance for a drive-through bank. That's why it's going in front of the zoning board. I don't know how... Anyway, I don't know how they go vote. Charlie did submit a letter with his initial comments on this. I don't know if many of you got that.
Yeah.
So the function you're doing right now is to review comments to the Board of Appeals for the special permit application and site plan review?
Any idea on what their timeline is with their MEPA filing?
No.
Does that take forever?
No, it doesn't. There's a timeframe for that as well, too. They submitted the ENF. There was a site visit by the MEPA office last month. And I don't know what the timeframe is for... A decision.
Yeah, I see that.
It's like a Trader Joe's.
Eighteen thousand square feet, which is...
It would have to be a specialty, being that it's small and it's in between Walmart and Target.
Is this the parking area?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It just strikes me that, you know, the opposite corner of the road was limited to, what, 18,000 square feet of building, and then this... The grocery store alone is 18,000 square feet.
Charlie, quick question.
Sir?
So the building that shows the proposed grocery and then the proposed retail, B and C, that's actually one building.
Yes.
So that building needs sprinkling.
I suppose.
Yeah.
Incidentally, just so that the board is aware, there's a new state statute, coupled along with NFPA, that says that any time there is a new plan submitted to the fire department that requires access, that they show a plan computed that's been computer-generated that shows the movements of trucks running through that site. So I know that the fire department has a copy of that plan. I've seen it, but I don't think that you or the ZBA got a copy of that plan. But it's something that you might want to consider incorporating either into your site plan regulations under the planning board review or the zoning bylaw. They're gonna have to do it anyway. You might as well have a copy of it so you can see the results of it.
Right. The access to Cranberry Highway, I think, is troubling. I know there's been a driveway there forever, but never to the volume. This is what it was subjected to.
In the driveway or... No, in there, yeah.
The thing is, looking at it right off the bat, if somebody comes out of there and decides to take a left, it had a 28 towards the middle.
Just see what was there.
Can't.
An island.
What's gonna stop them?
It's supposed to be right turn in, right turn out, but like Mike said, if there's nothing there but a painted stripe...
Nothing stops them.
We have a similar situation at the Mayflower or Nile Rockland Trust, and, you know, there's accidents, there's been several accidents there.
Right.
People making illegal left turns.
Now, the state has a say on that because it's on entering the state roadway. Remember the bank, they made them put that corrugated concrete in the middle to discourage them, but that don't stop them. And what happens now is when you come down that road, if you're going, continuing on 28, everybody bears to the right, the right-hand lane straight through, and the middle lane goes, turns on the Toby Road to Walmart. People coming across, coming out of 28 on their exit, if they decide to go the other way, it's gonna be a gridlock. You got the trailers going here.
I did look at that because when I first saw it, I said, "Well, they're making a right turn into that turning lane that goes to Wareham Crossing," but it doesn't. It... You're out into the travel lane if you make that right-hand turn, and then you can get into the right-turn lane into the crossing. But still, I agree that there's a fair amount of traffic that goes by that area.
It's a busy area, and in certain times of the day, you get the tractor-trailers going in and out of, down the street on Toby Road. It gets pretty busy in there.
It does.
Well, the other issue is the Toby Road in the section itself, that right-turning lane disappears and then opens up again to the Walmart driveway. When you come off of Cranberry Highway, so basically, you're putting both directions into one lane with people that want to go to Walmart having to cross the whole...
You get the more gray here, so they get confused going in there, you know?
Careful.
Careful now.
That's 21.
You know, I'm saying, I mean, you know, we're creating more of a mess than anything else. You know, it seems like everything's focused on a certain area, and all of a sudden, you see people, "Oh, jeez, I want to go," they're doing this all the time. I go through there in the morning, and in the morning, it's pretty tough.
I saw an ambulance today. That had problems getting through.
You know, all the time, you know, for the longest time, you always try to stay one lane over because the first lane went into the industrial park. So now you go, all of a sudden, you got a truck in the right-hand lane, says, "I'm gonna pull in the middle," says, "Oh, shit." I got, excuse my language, you got five cars in front of you. You're gonna jump on the gas to get over to the right lane again. Otherwise, they're gonna cut you off when you get up to the lights because that middle lane is turning left, and you want to go straight. It's tougher in the morning.
I do it every day.
You're one of them guys that cut people off.
La la land.
In front of eating oatmeal while I'm driving, you know, people over there texting and stuff. You know, all kidding aside, I mean, you know, it's a...
It's a busy area.
Tough situation here.
Well... Well, all in all, so when does this go to zoning, Charlie? Coming out?
Wednesday night.
Mr. Rowley, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The restaurant and the retail A, they seem to be backed up to Seth Toby Road. Do you think that maybe the... Those aren't the backs of the buildings, or do you think they truly are?
I can only assume that they are because your sidewalks and your approaches to the building are on the inside of the project.
Right.
There's nothing, there's no sidewalk leading into, think that you'd get into the building by coming around in front of the building between that and Toby Road to get inside.
All right. And I did...
That's the only assumption I made, that that's where it is.
And I did see somewhere that this is a seven-year project?
In the traffic report, they talk about the complete build-out date of 2023.
Yeah, that's what I thought I read.
If it stretches that far, who knows? There are some issues with respect to traffic on a couple of moments on Toby Road. When you get out that far...
Right.
They go to a level of service F, which is not very acceptable.
That's totally unacceptable.
Yeah.
There?
F is not an acceptable traffic.
Right. Well, one of the big things that I saw with that is there's really only one facility for servicing these buildings, and it's behind the grocery store. There is a concrete pad there with a loading dock, which I assume would be the purpose of allowing a tractor-trailer to back in there so they can unload goods and services. But I don't see any reasonable places for other people in the other buildings to service them, which means that a lot of those spaces that you see, they're gonna be blocked by a truck at some point, point or another, where they're not gonna be effective. The other thing about the service entrance to the grocery store, too, was that the only way that the trucker is going to get out of there is to make his loop around the building and come out in front of it.
Right.
Which puts him in direct conflict with the people who are walking back and forth into the grocery store. Compare that with what Walmart has, which is a separate in and out completely, so they don't have to mix with the other traffic. So I think there are some things about it that perhaps could use some improvement.
Right.
What's, this proposed retail A, there's... Somebody hasn't got the plan, but there's a sort of like a black line. I don't know if it's a granite... I don't know if it's a granite curb.
There was a retaining wall there.
Is that, is that a retaining wall in there?
There's not much of a grade change right at the road. I'm not sure why that's there. It's not, that jagged line that's in front of that building, it, it, it's supposed to be a retaining wall. There's a, if you look out on the road, it says proposed retaining wall. The arrow doesn't go to it.
No, it doesn't. Yeah.
I'm not sure why it's there.
And there's, the trucks coming in just pull up in front in the middle of the, middle of the travel lane?
It's either that or they're gonna back in between building A and the restaurant, which effectively blocks off eleven parking spaces.
There's sixty-two percent covered on that area.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a way of, you know, getting deliveries though, Charlie, without, I mean, how many spots do they need? In your letter, you said they, they were overrun the parking by how many?
Sixty-three spaces.
So, I mean, you could probably come up with some sort of, some sort of thing there. I mean, your dumpster is, is in between the two buildings. So they're gonna, the truck's gonna pull in and get the dumpster. I can't see why they couldn't make the, do something with those islands or whatever up front and let the truck back in and deliver from both sides. I mean, you gotta have some way to deliver. And the turnaround on the big building just, just isn't there.
But even, I realize there really isn't any need to have some sort of a service entrance for the bank. But clearly the restaurant and the retail A needs one and that little isolated retail D needs something. And I don't really see any service areas set aside for retails B or C. Most of it seems to go with the grocery store at the end of it.
Yeah, 'cause even behind retail B and C, they've got a row of parking, which would block, you know, the truck pulling up there, so. Yeah, there's a couple of concerns.
They're within three percent of the total maximum impervious cover, too, Charlie. Building square footage is well below the maximum allowed. Impervious cover is within three percent of the sixty-five.
Yeah, I saw your notes. So what are they looking for, Mr. Chairman, in comments? Is that it?
The other, the one, if you have the potential, well, you have two high-volume users across the street.
They're gonna see what they have.
The, but I don't know how you fix it. It's so close to Cranberry Highway, you're gonna have queuing issues if you try to put a light there and, unless you came down to the other.
Yeah, what was the note from the fire department on the, the light system out there? They want some more controls or?
I think they'll be looking for them to kind of adopt a light system as far as the opticon goes. They have the opticon installed in Walmart, ADM, Wayham Crossing of all. Picked an intersection to maintain and there's one more intersection left, I guess, as boy it was described. Hopefully they could pick up the maintenance on that, 'cause that's, while Wayham Crossing agreed to install them all, there was no long-term maintenance plan for repair. Seemed to be one of these.
Well, exactly, yeah. So it's just one intersection left, but this, this is actually a pretty good, pretty good owner in the town, you know, so I, I can't see something like that. Charlie, I agree with your notes, Mr. Chairman. I, I think as far as the note with the two buildings, with the, with the back of the building facing Seth Toby Road. Kind of the type of restaurants, I'm sure they could almost put a fake facade on it, you know what I mean, where it wouldn't look like just the back of the building. And then, I guess, the retail, something similar, so you wouldn't drive by and just see the back of a concrete building. This one's twenty feet from the road, so I think they could dress that up. But, but delivery-wise, I think Charlie's right. We, we need something between those two or, or for those two. The turnaround on the proposed grocery store is, I'm just looking at it like if I was building it, Charlie, and that's tight.
Guy's gonna have to be a good truck driver.
He's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
It's a straight truck, you might be able to back and fill, but if you get one of those big trailers in there, it's never gonna turn out.
The entrance for the grocery store on Toby Road, Toby Road is, well, you stated in your, in your thing here also, Toby Road gets pretty narrow pretty quick after the entrance to Walmart. You know, people using the market, they probably wanna use that one in there because human nature is the shortest point to get out.
Well, the other thing that I looked at, I don't know whether it's realistic to expect that they could negotiate something with the Wayham Crossing site, but I drove in next to JCPenney. There is a parking area next to JCPenney, isn't used that much. And right next to the edge of it is a driveway that goes out, goes into that parking area.
Right.
You can look right into this site.
It's all, only thing that's packed here is snow removal.
And there's, there's a fairly good grade change, but I don't think there's anything that couldn't be overcome with a little bit of engineering to maybe provide secondary access back and forth into Wayham Crossing. Now, whether or not the two parties could negotiate something or if they saw that that was beneficial to either one or the other, maybe they'll say, no, we don't want you coming in here. But at least it's a secondary access to where somebody who's in this project doesn't have to get out onto Toby Road if they wanna go to Lowe's or just wanna go to some other place inside. They can stay internal and get out of the highways. Just a thought and I, I threw that in there for consideration.
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation that they reach out to Wayham Crossing and see if some sort of agreement can be made. Do you think there's any point in making the secondary driveway exit-only, right turn? Or is that?
The one on twenty-eight?
Yeah.
They came here for the zoning change. Because beaten on the strip right in here.
I don't see the benefit of having it a right turn in, especially, anybody who's coming from the west is gonna come to the traffic light and I would think that they would just make their turn onto Toby Road, go to the intersection, take a left and go into the site. I mean, why would you just blow past the light and then take that hard right to get in?
Unless I was driving.
Well, unless you were driving, going like this, yeah.
That could possibly provide an exit for their truck route to, is, come out to the highway and take a right. Does mean going through the whole parking field.
Well, they'd, they'd still be going through a percentage of it and to have a slow-moving truck, you could pull out there after the light. I don't know. I don't like the idea really of any access point after that traffic light, now that it's been remodeled so that you've got two lanes of traffic. Before they did the most recent remodel, there was just the one lane. Now you've got the left-hand turn into tow road and then you've got two through lanes, plus you've got the right-hand lane that goes to Toby. So you've got two lanes that are, got their mindset and getting through that series of lights. To have a, say, a box truck trying to get out of that narrow right-turn lane onto Cranberry Highway, I think would be dangerous.
So that entrance and exit, Charlie, on Cranberry Highway, though, is that, was sixteen feet wide, is it? Those, is that enough?
It is for car.
Okay.
Let me see if I can tell you what it is.
Oh, yeah, well, it's kind of dimensioned from the aisle.
I can tell you what it is.
Yeah, it says sixteen. I'm Plan Four.
But again, with the traffic that's gonna be coming through and a truck trying to get out there into the travel lane, I think this is gonna be a little tough.
Well, this is a state-controlled highway in this section, correct? So DOT is gonna have to approve the design.
I was looking to see where this riprap they're showing was going, but apparently it feeds the detention basis when we get to another. We get to this.
Which plan you want, George? Which sheet?
Uh, five.
Five, yeah.
The earlier sheet four just showed riprap and it's like, where's that going to?
There's a drainage area that they've designed. I haven't actually gone through all of the calculations run up yet. I felt that there were sufficient issues that threw, so that, that everybody was sure that there weren't any significant changes to be made before I went through all of that drainage calculation, everything, and checked inverts of pipes and all of that. The methods are okay. The soils look as if they're in pretty good shape.
You, you really don't need those if it's just an exit.
Acceptable to put.
I don't know of any regulations against it. There's nothing to say, I don't, I have to remember what they did for the landscaping plan, whether they.
Yeah, I was just gonna look.
They did a little bit of, they did a little bit of visual screening, but not a great deal. It will be depressed three or four feet from grade from the highway. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable yet with the grades that they've shown because they, they did the soil testing in February. And this is the time of year when you're gonna have your maximum high groundwater, especially given the fact that we had light snowfall over the winter and we didn't have an awful lot of infiltration. So if you look on sheet five, there is a wetlands line. It's flagged with WF numbers. And if you look along that line, the elevation of the wetlands line is between forty-five and forty-six. They're saying that the water, groundwater elevation is forty-two. Well, maybe it is and maybe it isn't. That's why I don't wanna get into too much detail on the subsurface infiltration or the elevation of these ponds until we've had a little bit more evidence that the groundwater is where they say it is. The test logs simply show that they found it. They don't show any evidence of what a soil evaluator would reference in his logs in terms of modeling or irrigation soils that suggest that groundwater does get up higher than where they found it. So I wanna make sure that that's correct.
Well, my, my first comment when I look at it is it's too much in, in that area. I know it may beat, meet the bylaw as far as percentage of coverage, but it, it seems like an awfully busy site, as you say. Maybe reducing some of the parking or, I don't know how they arrived at the size of the buildings, but.
Thirty-six hundred square feet.
They have specific tenants that are looking for a certain size.
Isn't that the average size over there, though? Thirty-six? Cause I believe TJ Maxx is about thirty-six square.
I wish they'd spin them around. If you, if you could spin the supermarket around to where the thirty-six hundred square foot building is, so it's facing Seth Toby Road, then you could put retail A and the restaurant out of where the rest, where the supermarket is. In the thirty-six hundred square foot building, you could put over on Seth Toby Road and, and it's not so big that it would stand out like a sawthorn.
Yeah, with proper screening, but I, I think you'd need a little bit bigger setback than just twenty-one feet.
Right. But I mean, I just wish, I mean, the bank's fine, but I wish they could just spin it all ninety degrees and it seems like it would be a lot nicer for the appearance, at least.
Driving on Toby Road, you're gonna seem like you're going out in an alley facing the back of the buildings.
Yeah, not like that at all.
Well, that's what I was saying. You, you, they can put, like, if the restaurant, they, they could put a, you know, like a nice facade, almost make it like two fronts, but there'd be no door on that side, you know what I mean? But at least to the, to the naked eye, as you drive by, you'd say, oh, that's Chili's or Texas Roadhouse or whoever it is. It would look, they could make it look nice. If they make it look like Dollar General, then it's gonna look like Hecktown, just a big stone look.
Yeah, I think the ninety-nine has, has some details on the part that faces the street.
Yeah. And then they screened all of their duct work and utilities and so forth on the back by a fairly good-sized fence, so you really don't see any of that at all.
I think they did a nice job over there. This place is looking good.
Well, the only problem is they have a sway up between the parking lot and the building, one place to cross. After you've had a few pops, Charlie, you never know. Go through that swail.
That's why I missed the light.
Yeah, the biggest store here is the, is the grocery store and it's the farthest from the entrance. I mean, it's, everybody's piling here.
It would almost seem that if they took the grocery store and those two buildings that are on the wing and made it parallel to Toby Road rather than at right angles, you'd see the front of the grocery store and then, like you say, you could take the restaurant and the other retail space and put those on the side, which would perhaps.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike's right. I think you just turn those a little bit and just gonna put the whole site in a different, different.
Ninety-degree rotation.
As it is right now, you're not even gonna see that grocery store when you're driving by.
I would put the grocery store here and put these two.
And that, that's the other strange thing, the peculiar thing is the sign for this project is out at that right turn, right out entrance on Cranberry Highway.
Then I would, I would put the restaurant here.
You'd think they would have it at the main entrance.
Well, do we have, do we have some comments that we can? How are your notes doing?
I can write up something on, based on this conversation.
I think the layout is terrible.
Can you make comments on relocating stores to different locales on the property?
Oh, sure. That's why we're giving them comments.
You can make comments in any way you want to in this, in this regard. It doesn't necessarily mean that.
Right.
Yeah, zoning, zoning, you know, I mean, over the years that I was on zoning, I, I think we got comments from you guys one or two times. And, and that's why it's, it's important. Everybody gives their two cents, so especially now with zoning is all bringing new people. They need help, you know? They could use some input. So, yeah, I think it makes, you know, you've got some trained eyes looking at it, like Charlie said, the same thing, a little turn here, a little turn there. I myself think there's way too much curb in the parking lot. I hate all that curb in the parking lot. It's just, it's just accidents waiting to happen, but that's just me. But I think if they can tweak the position of the building, Mike, that, that will put to rest my concern with the turnaround behind the, behind the grocery store. There's no trailer, not even a big thirty-foot, twenty-four, thirty-foot box truck. Come around that building and as you come around the building, you bang right into that first curb. I mean, that's a tough, tough corner right there, so. Perhaps maybe take the parking, it's handicapped, but you might have to move that out of there or whatever, but. Ken, I don't know, I, I, my two cents are gone with Mike. Maybe you should just make a suggestion that they turn a little bit.
Let me just see.
Mr. Rowley, that subsurface infiltration system that's right in front of the grocery store, is that mandatory that that's located right there or is that by design they put it there?
Are you looking at the, that sort of a grid that's right in front of it?
Yes, sir.
That's all subsurface?
I know, but my question is, is, does it have to be there or could it be relocated more to the center of the parking lot? And the reason I'm asking that is because I'm, I am thinking if they, if they spin the grocery store, they're gonna want the grocery store on the left-hand side of the building and then the two thirty-six hundred square foot stores on the right facing Seth Toby Road. And I think the grocery. And I think the grocery store is gonna infringe on the parking area where you see that grid.
If, if you were to reorientate, orient the plan so that the grocery store is now along that most easterly edge, uh, this whole drainage configuration you've got's probably gonna go out the window. It probably is gonna stay there anyway. The reason it's there is because of the grade. Everything is pitching a little bit down gradient from Toby Road toward that most easterly boundary.
Yes.
So they're taking advantage of the natural grade and that's why it's located where it is.
Okay.
But if you reorientate the buildings, uh, it might be that they'll raise the grade of the buildings a little bit, which means that that infiltration basin could be moved. It's not cast in stone, it has to stay there.
Okay.
The lighting plan does appear to be awfully bright also. You've got fives and sixes and eights in there. Does seem to be a higher level of lighting than the site plan that we normally see.
I'd have to go back and review whatever they did for Walmart, but my guess is it's probably the same intensity of what they have at Walmart. But that's certainly easy enough to just confirm by reviewing the plan. There certainly does seem to be. Well, it's pretty well contained. There is a little bit of spill over onto Toby Road, but you want a little bit of spill over to illuminate those intersections.
Much improvement they plan on doing on Toby Road going down there? Just to their second entrance, that's it?
Yeah.
Toby Road's in tough shape. Seems like they've eased me all the way down here.
It is, but if you look, look on. Could be any sheet actually. There's the sidewalk. It's at the Walmart Plaza on their side of the road, on sheet four, five, wherever.
Sheet five.
You'll see that, I believe, from, from there as far as the service entrance on Walmart, that was done repaved. They did do a, a, a patch in the pavement for the water connection that goes to the back of Walmart. And I don't recall if the full repaving goes to the service entrance of Walmart. I think it does, but I'm not positive. In which case, you're pretty, pretty good, pretty good paving to that point. Beyond that, it's a mess.
It's terrible. I think when they did the sewer way before the mall came, that things, you know, it's, it's pretty bad.
Well, when they put the sewer in for the US Post Office site is when that first happened.
Yeah. It seems like, you know, it's going backwards.
Was the drainage along that stretch updated with Walmart?
No.
All they did was carve a hole down, a trench down the middle to put the sewer in. Unless it's all gonna change when the train station comes, I don't know.
Hold your breath, Mike.
Mister Rowley?
Yes.
What's your concern about the traffic study? It's two thousand and fifteen now, would you be requiring them to do an updated one?
Their traffic, um, data was collected for October of last year. Uh, that's about the time, I think, that Walmart opened. I'm not sure whether the, that data then takes into account the increase in traffic that has resulted from Walmart. I also don't know from the traffic study whether or not what they're saying in their accounts for the significant increase in traffic that Wareham sees as a result of our summer population. They're saying in the traffic report that the October counts are about eight percent, eight percent, I believe they said, over the average. So that they're saying that the traffic counts are conservative. Maybe the average for the region and maybe the average for the general area, but is it average for Wareham? Mike, you know, I know, John, you probably know that Cranberry Highway sees a lot more traffic today in spite of four ninety-five than it ever did.
From Cumberland Farms all the way up.
In both ways, in the morning and in the afternoon, you get a lot of traffic. So that coupled with the fact that we're getting into the summer season, I don't know how accurate those numbers are. Could be greater.
Just as a sidebar comment, in the last couple of weeks with the opening of the ninety-nine restaurant, uh, just in general, what seems to be happening, the hotel complex beginning busier. Cause they do a lot of business with the military, the Marriott, they have a special program. A lot of people are coming up to the National Cemetery this time of year. That parking lot at Rosebrook is, it's maxed out already.
Yeah.
It's maxed out.
I thought that the other night when I went to the ninety-nine, I said, wow, there's no parking here. And I drove around and I'm saying, wow, there's, there's a lot of parking here, it's just bull. But you know, Alan, like I told you years ago, you didn't believe me, if you build it, they'll come.
That's what I told the railroad people when they were complaining about the pilot program. When I went, when I went to Boston, I said, just build it, we'll take care of it, so. I disagree at all, but I'm just looking at, we've got, we've got eight more restaurant pads available, probably will be filled within a year, two year and a half max, uh, ready for someone to come in. And that alone is gonna bring a lot more in. Sooner or later, the, the, a fifty-eight, you know, with the old Moss property, that's gonna, you have to build sooner or later. And we can't get the state to do a tip program for Route twenty-eight until twenty twenty-one at the earliest, so we're gonna have some severe traffic issues.
It'll be like Eastway.
So basically, what, what the state told me a couple of days ago was anytime a developer comes in to do anything on Cranberry Highway, we need to do mitigation to try and get real work out of them wherever possible. And they were actually assisting us. Understand when you have a project, you're gonna have to ask for help on the roads. It's not happening on its own.
That, um, the proposed restaurant in Retail A, looking at the landscape plan, there's no access from the rear to those properties. Both of them are only accesses on two sides.
Are you recommending entrance if it remains that, that configuration?
Well, I, I think it just illustrates that they're gonna be bad to service these.
Yeah, there'll be.
Deliveries during opening, during open hours.
There'll be no deliveries on the Toby Road side.
Yeah, I mean, but. I don't know any restaurants that don't get deliveries during the day and, and like, looking at that one, they can't get a delivery without shutting their billing off.
Do it at night, after hours.
You know, if they do things here, those people are gonna probably come in this way to get there too. Cause there's not another curb cut going.
Well, granted, chain restaurants have different ways of doing things, but. I know there's lane lock restaurants over at Lane Crossing that seem to make out okay.
Well, they're there early in the morning.
Say the chains have way to, ways to accommodate it.
Yeah. Wareham Crossing traffic is outstandingly tune up. Home Goods came in and Home Goods, uh, exceeded what Best Buy ever came close to. And the, the Chinese restaurant is really busy and the Mexican restaurants.
There's no parking over there.
No, I mean, it's, everything's, was fine, you know, there was no stores. And the place is full, all stores are full. There's no openings. Yeah, no, there's, and there's money coming in.
It's good for the town.
But I mean, by the time this gets done, people, there's no reason to leave Wareham to go out to eat. I mean, there's a lot of really great restaurants.
No reason to leave Wareham now.
Better because all the people in Wareham will be working there, they can spend their money there. Nice.
There's no reason to leave Wareham now to go out to eat, there's plenty of.
Three is gonna disagree with you.
Ninety in capital D.
Alan, whatever happened to, uh, oh, I just, the name just went out of my head, Cracker Barrel? Weren't they coming at one time?
Uh, yeah, that was gonna come into, uh, originally into Rosebrook way back. That was one of the first ones in, in Canada. Then it was gonna go down to, uh, the Moss property down there, because it was gonna be. Down there, market basket looked there for a little bit. There's a lot of, a lot of pieces moving around.
I'm just saying, that's a, that's a good plate of food, you know, ten bucks, what a plate of food you get at Cracker Barrel.
I haven't been to one of those since the last time I drove south. You got a whole page full of stuff.
Yeah, you wanna repeat him?
Probably should go through them and see if we missed anything.
All right.
Ken's gonna go through his list, see if we missed anything.
Let me know what the, if I missed or, or changed your, the, the tone of what you're saying. Uh, the, the volume of traffic onto Cranberry Highway is, is such that the access, the, the driveway access has to be re-looked at. Circulation in the parking lot and the lot itself is poor. Access for deliveries doesn't work on the restaurant, retail and for the, the back of the, the supermarket, the food store. The, uh, the, the, the option is to rotate the buildings to reorient the site so that the, uh, the site plan would, would change to present, present itself to Toby Road. The lighting plan may be too intense and have to check on, on the, what the precedent was set at the Walmart. Toby Road is in bad shape and needs improvement. The traffic study needs updating. The view of the backside of the Retail A and the restaurant building on Toby Road and no access for deliveries is, is, we'll say is unacceptable. What else?
Well, let me ask a question, Mike and Mike, when you, Michelle too, I guess you were gonna, turning the grocery store, how it's sitting now, are you turning it where the grocery store stays where it is and flipping the two retail towards the back or are you shifting it forward?
I, I don't think we should be that detailed on design.
No, I'm just asking what their, what their idea was. I hate designing, they got engineers and architects, but, but when you said turn it, which, what way did you mean when you were suggesting?
Was to take the restaurant, I mean, the supermarket which is facing this way now.
Right.
And turn it so that it's facing this way and put the supermarket here and the two thirty-six hundred square foot retail spaces on the right-hand side of it facing Toby Road.
So rotate it on that corner.
The, the grocery store would stay where it is, it's just turning.
No, the grocery store will.
Will rotate.
Will rotate.
He, he, he's got, he's got it right. Rotate that so that the.
Ninety degrees.
So that the su, the supermarket stays farthest away from Cranberry Highway.
Yes, and then the thirty-six hundred square foot retail is on the right-hand side and then by doing that, that would allow you then to.
Yeah, like that.
But then hopefully that would allow you to move the A and the restaurant, but keeping the restaurant nearest to the access to Toby Road, which is probably the smartest thing to do. And put A near the supermarket so that it will benefit from being nearest to the main retailer or the facility.
And does D wind up disappearing because?
No, you could probably tuck that over where the restaurant and A are, but you could put it away from Toby Road and, and landscape it nicely so that it's buffered from Toby Road and.
Okay. Well, I, I like the ninety-degree turn, Ken, that's what, that's all I was heading at. Design-wise, I could kill it, I never did.
I think I mentioned ninety degrees.
You did.
Was there a setback, can I say?
But then I heard.
Setback concern right now on the, uh, the restaurant.
Saying if you turn it ninety way.
Might end up reducing one of the.
But I hear.
One of the.
Something feed from.
I think that would, might work if you rotated that and moved those two over to the side. Coming out of Walmart, it's right there in front of you.
So if they don't have a tree to choose, you go Walmart.
Yeah, I don't know what their, I've never been to an Halloween, so I don't know what they. What their product is, whether it complements the others or. I heard they charge a rental fee for shopping cat, but I don't know if you get it back, if you bring a cat back. That's a good idea, put a deposit on the shop of cats.
I think so. Hey, you got enough comments?
I was surprised that it actually says no for bank drive.
Yeah, it says no for the.
We'll change that.
I thought, I thought it was special permit. Because, uh, there's a, there's a drive-to-bank on the inside of the road. I mean, there's a, there's an instance where even a fast food driver, you could put in without having people making long turns across the highways or queuing out in traffic.
Yes, for a non-food drive-in establishment, it's no in the commercial strip district.
Well, is it listed somewhere different under banks? I think it is.
Banks are listed separately. It's the non-food drive-in establishment.
What's the bank, is the bank a special permit or is it a variance?
The bank is a, a yes in commercial strip. It's the, only the drive-in that, that makes it, puts it into the Board of Appeals.
Why do they need a variance, Charlie?
For the drive-in?
Because the bank doesn't necessarily need a drive-in. But when it says non-food related drive-in, that relates to a bank. I didn't see the four statutory requirements within their documentation included, so they're gonna have to talk about that once they.
There used to be one in, uh.
Well, pharmacies have.
Yeah, the pharmacies. It's the. Rugs to go.
What's the difference between, you know, a bank and a pharmacy?
Bank and then you drive, you spend it all to get the drugs to go.
I just don't see where I would make it.
Are you not feeling well, Alan? Are you not feeling well?
I wasn't listening, sorry.
Or is that not you that just said that text?
No, it's someone, one of those, like one has a cat, it was a serious workout.
Has a what?
So let's have a fundraiser for the cat.
Mary is not taking any more clients and emergency place, only does emergencies.
I would say probably Chase.
Marion's not taking any more clients because the doctor's gone.
Next choice. Next choice.
They're getting a new one. Oh, I know. That's where my dog goes.
Maybe they, everybody's gonna, they're gonna ask some personnel over there because they, they're actually really good. Scramble.
Yeah. Oh, yeah? Oh, is that where they, they, that's where she had to take my dog? He got sick.
I don't know. That's Mister.
Yeah.
I was.
Make a motion that we reappoint George to Serpent representative another chance.
I have to. The notification never really made it to Serpent lot last year, so.
No, never did. I tried many times.
I thought I saw your name on the list though, George, when I looked at that website.
I've gotta get back into the routine and make sure it doesn't conflict with, uh, community preservation. That's a Wednesday night too.
Uh, they meet the, yeah, it's the fourth Wednesday. But you can go or not go, you know, and that kind of thing.
Shall we free the fourth Wednesday?
I could free up my, my calendar, definitely.
I don't think they have an alternate for that though.
I could be a backup.
There's no alternate for that. I'm, I'm actually the Serpent Commissioner. George can go if he wants. It's not a voting thing.
I believe it's two commissioners, right?
No, just the one.
It was two, one from the selectmen and one from the planning board.
They have both, but the actual Serpent Commissioner vote is the, is the elected official, unfortunately.
Which is you.
Yeah.
All right. Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I did. John, second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Boy, that was a no doubt. No, no hesitation on that one.
Be careful what you wish for.
Didn't leave me hanging on that vote.
No, we don't want you to be confused, Mister Chairman.
It's like I left a, I left a meeting the other night to use a copier and they came in and said, say aye. And I thought it was to adjourn. It was.
I sent her an email, but I haven't heard from her in weeks.
I tell most into adjourn.
You need, oh, get her another resume so we can get it into the new director.
Do you have something to say, Mister?
We gotta talk about that.
Oh, sorry.
What, what?
Do we have to talk about Bay Point?
Not only agenda.
I think that you'd have to do an executive session as.
Right. We have to do that. We can't adjourn and then have an executive session.
I would.
I don't think.
I don't know how's. When do we meet with them?
Sixteenth.
Next Monday.
Next week.
Monday.
Ten o'clock, I think.
Uh, it was a ten or eleven.
The posted, posted meeting?
At Bay Point?
We haven't seen it yet in writing, but, um.
You know what I'm saying? You, you're posting a meeting for Monday?
Be posting it for Monday, the sixteenth.
Okay, if you wanna have an executive session in that meeting, you can put it into, either before the meeting. You can open the meeting and you can go to a certain point and put it in there that you're gonna go into executive session. Normally you put a time in there.
They are posted as executive session. Anyway, we could, uh,
Well, then if, if they, if they're posted.
caucus prior to meeting with them.
I think the intent though is to have a short discussion this evening.
Yes.
You can go to.
Not wait till Monday.
You can wait, you can, well, even though it's, even though you didn't put it on your agenda, you can, you can basically vote to go into executive session now. You know, leave regular session, go into executive session and then come out and go back into open and then close.
Well, you don't have to come back into open session.
Well, it's easier just, we have those guys, they complained about how we do it and everything. In theory, you're supposed to list it on an actual agenda that you're going into executive ahead of time. We got complaint from some guy in Hyannis about that if you're gonna look.
It's the board's pleasure.
We'll be going to executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Item number three.
I think the exact, uh, thing is, uh, to discuss court audit, uh, mediation.
Mediation, yeah. Which is item number three.
And I will make the disclaimer, whether it's right or not, that items discussed in executive session would have an adverse effect on the town's position if discussed in open session.
Yep.
Uh, there was a motion made. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion would be, and the motion did include not to return to open session?
Yes. I remember saying that.
When you go into executive session, I'm sorry, you're a pain in the ass. You have to poll the board individually.
I'm getting ready to do that.
And then Bobby's to shut off everything.
Right.
All right. Uh, Bob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike? Michael?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And yes for me. So we're in executive session, Bob?
I've turned down the sound.
Okay.